All right. Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is August 27th, 2024, and it's 7:10 PM. Would the clerk call the rules, please?
Uh, Councilor Vai?
Present.
Councilor Musa?
Present.
Councilor Sedman?
Present.
Councilor Asmari?
Yes, present.
Councilor Mahfoud?
Yes.
Councilor Hassan?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you. Please, yes. All right. Thank you. Do we have any community announcements?
Uh, none posted.
All right. We move to the proclamations, presentations, and recognitions. We are the first one recognizing and celebrating Labor Day. Would anyone want to read that? Is there anything to be read?
Uh, it's not necessary, but if you insist, would I like to pull it up and read it if you'd like?
I mean...
Um, let me see if my internet is working. Which also, let me also state, I know we have presentation, and you expect to be up there on our presentation, but uh, if I can't open it, it's gonna be difficult for me to even... I can do it without it. Okay.
But internet's going really slow trying to get it out.
Can, do you mind if we skip the present and the proclamation?
I mean, that's fine. I have it on, but it's a short one. All right, so the next one is uh, another presentation for NEZ updates.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have Isabel here to give a presentation on that.
Evening, council. Um, this will be short, and we don't have the visual aid. I'll do my best to explain, and you have it in the materials. I'm available for any questions. Um, as well, this week and anytime after. So, I'm providing a status update on the NEZ project to establish these neighborhood enterprise zones within the city. We had a Phase 1 identified as three separate sites that back this spring had been noticed. We've been going through the process to get them established. Um, and found out from the State Tax Commission that we had pre-existing zones, some of which are useful to us, some of which are not. So currently, um, we are assessing what we need to do to be able to begin the process again. And notice, public hearings, staff is working on establishing a timeline for that. Um, and I plan to have another update for you at the next meeting. Current things we're tackling at the moment include doing an inventory of the parcels that we received, notice from the state that were already in effect within the city, so that we can have that accurate calculation of what's existing. Um, the city attorney is working to draft resolutions to dissolve NEZ zones. And, as I mentioned, we'll be creating the project timeline to share with you at future council meetings, um, so we know our next steps are moving forward. Um, and I hope to discuss options to adopt and dissolve different zones with you in further detail at that point. Um, included with the agenda items for this presentation today, I also attached the March presentation that had a lot of background and context about the NEZ project. Since it's been a while since we've discussed this, um, not with me, but with my predecessor, feel free to take a look at that, and again, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions? George, when you said "this side," whose side did you mention, like, the siding?
Sure, so, um, I'm glad I printed out one of the... I thought we'd get the presentation. We can pass this down. These were the first three sites that were proposed back in the spring. Um, those were identified as Phase 1 of the project, so that we could have sort of a trial run, and then adopt another three, was my understanding. Um, so these will be adopted, we expect, in some form, but there's some overlap between them and existing sites. So we're just sorting all that out. I can pass this down if anyone would like.
I believe the maps uploaded, uploaded online as well.
Yeah, that's in the presentation.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you can make a note, there is a typo in "E" in the business. It should be 2024, not 2021 for the resolution number.
I was gonna catch that.
I know, I wanted to beat you to it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right. We move to additions, additions of the agenda. Is there any additions or additions?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
I'd like to add one resolution. F, like a Frank, Resolution Number 2024-116. Discussion about the serious safety issue in Hamtramck.
It wouldn't be a resolution, though, it would just be discussion.
It's a discussion.
Yes, so it'd just be... It would be a letter "F," discussion.
Discussion.
And I'm sorry, can you tell me what the discussion is again?
Safety concern issue.
Of the safety?
Safety issue regarding the police department.
Okay.
Uh, do I have a second?
One second.
All right. One in favor of that?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right, so we would have, uh, item "F," discussion of public safety concern. All right. So, uh, any other additions or additions?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Now we move to public comments, please.
Uh, we need the agenda approval as amended, please.
I'd like to... Michael, a second.
All right. Everyone is in favor of the amended agenda?
Aye.
No objections?
No.
Thank you. All right. So, back to the public comments, please.
Thank you. Abraham Alunian? Three minutes?
Can you please just put the, push the button on this?
Okay.
Yep, perfect.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have eight points to talk about. First point is, I would like to apologize to the city clerk for saying that you was talking about people that's missing in the city, and I did not know it was your first council meeting that you ever missed. I apologize.
Thank you.
Second point, I would like to thank the police department on the successful event of the youth academy. Thank you, Chief Jamal Taheri. Third, I would like to thank Sergeant Luigi and his work in the business community. He's doing a great job, chief. Four, I would like to congratulate Commissioner Martha Scott on her win for the Wayne County Commissioner. Five, I would like to thank Councilman Mohammed Hassan for adopting Resolution 2024-111, authorizing the installation of speed bumps in the West Conant Alley between Belmont and Trowbridge. And I hope you guys support it. Six, 2020, uh, 2024-112, Resolution to honor renaming Burger Street in memory of Amina Anaya. We wholeheartedly support it as a community. Seventh point, committee members are calling for more responsibility for the schools and the speeding around the schools and the city as a whole to work with the police department. Point number eight, why do the police department have a deputy chief, but the fire department does not have a deputy chief? I would like to be, that would be answered by Max. My eighth point, why do the police department have a deputy chief, but the fire department does not have a deputy chief? Thank you very much.
Thank you. You wanna, can I start that question?
Please, click on your question. Click on your question.
It's mine, although, which historically they haven't. Um, staffing levels within both the police department and the fire department are negotiated and set based upon needs. Um, we have talked in the past with the fire chief in regards to doing it. Um, at this time, there doesn't seem to be a need for it.
Mr. Chair? Uh, can we leave it for the report, please, sir? Okay. Um, next person.
Thank you. Uh, Mansour Alghain? From Detroit, three minutes.
Salam alaikum. Good evening.
The system's down, don't even worry about the mic.
Thank you. My name is Mansour Alghain. I have a thousand, uh, family and friends lived in the city of Hamtramck, this beautiful city. After discussing this issue, uh, I'd like to bring the issue of the safety, uh, the police, what's going on in the city of Hamtramck. After discussing this issue last week with the mayor of Hamtramck, Dr. Amir Galib, my friends and my family and I decided to come to this meeting to bring this matter to this, to the attention of the city council. That's, uh, of the city of the city council, that's why we are here today, to ask why the police have not been able to resolve this problem. We believe this issue demands urgent at, uh, urgent attention, and we are, hopefully, that by raising this issue here, we can finally see progress in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Uh, Hamza Alghain?
Thank you. Salaam. Council members, mayor? I'm here to talk about dispatch, lady. I had an issue with her three months ago. By the way, um, I'm talking on behalf of Oliver Street, Dorothy, and Miller has been neglected in that area. So, three months ago, I called the dispatch, and she tripped, she, literally, I gave her an address that there's a suspect that's parked, looking suspicious, trying to rob somebody, and she clearly told me, this is not, this is not Hamtramck, that's Detroit, and hung up on my face. So I took matters on my own hand, started watching the guy. We got like a neighborhood group, we decided to all come out and just keep our eyes on him. Fast forward, August 23rd, that suspect that I see on Facebook they called, that was us. We stepped up, community, helped the police officers, thanks to them. I called her, I had a problem with her, it was like, quick, like, five minutes, four minutes, five minutes, arguing with her back and forth. First time I called her, I tried to explain to her, I gave her the address for Yezza's house. We all know that's in Hamtramck. Gave her the address, and she clearly told me that this is not Hamtramck. And I'm telling her, yes, it is. Hung up on my face. This is August 23rd, I can check the recording. Called her back again. Got loud with her, I got upset, I'm trying to tell her, listen, this is Hamtramck, I'm making it very clear. My brother owns a house there, this is clearly Hamtramck. Nope, she said, no, it's not. She, this time she didn't hang up, she just transferred me straight to Detroit. Out of nowhere. Then Detroit called me, I explained to Detroit, gave Detroit the address. Detroit ended up transferring me back to Hamtramck. Then, I guess she talked to some type of sergeant, I'm not sure what's his name. Then he said, yes, that's the guy we've been looking for for past three days, and that is Hamtramck. So, the lady, whoever it is, that's, that's very, very dangerous. Because can you imagine if somebody gets shot, and the first thing she says is, this is not Hamtramck? Another thing is education. She needs it, and this is not the first time, not just with me. How do I know this more than one time? Because I spoke to officers, there were two officers that were there, we spoke to, I was complaining, me and my friend. And she clearly said, I mean, they clearly told us that, yeah, we know, we know, we had a problem with her already. I'm like, oh, you had a problem before? They're like, yeah, we always have a problem with her, we always have a problem with her. Then why not solve the problem? Is she somebody's wife? Is she somebody's girl? Is there favoritism involved? Why is she still doing the same thing for the past, from the first incident that I had with her? So, please, if y'all can just educate her, or, I just don't want this to get worse for the next incident, if anything happens. So, thank you. Salaam alaikum.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Hamza Alghain, he called me the same time this accident happened, by the way. And, uh, I told him to actually come here to address this issue, because if it's been an issue of, uh, our dispatchers are actually not knowing where is the borders of Hamtramck if this is the issue. So I'm requesting from our chief, if he has to take them out, so they can know the borders of Hamtramck, and know their addresses, so they can learn. We need to do that. Education needs to be addressed, and needs to be done, so, you know, they don't make these mistakes. As this individual was actually, had been stealing packages from a neighbor where I live, and as, as he stated that, you know, this group, you know, things that, that we have a group in our neighborhood, that we keep contact to each other and know, you know, how we are able to, you know, fix the neighborhood, and also get this, you know, suspect arrested. So with their help, with their, uh, you know, communication, we were able to get this person that's been robbing the neighborhood for a while. So I only acknowledge that, so I'm hoping the chief will address that with his dispatch.
Thank you. And, and since you had a chance to follow up on this, Councilman Hassan, would you like to follow up on the previous?
Yes. So, deputy chief, like a manager said, it's up to us. This elected body depends on situation, depends on financial condition. Long time ago, we had it, 20 years, we don't have it. So suddenly, we have it. If we feel we don't need it, this body can eliminate anytime, any moment with the resolution. So don't worry about it. Again and again, very clear, this elected body and subcommittee, employment subcommittee, anytime can take that decision to resolve the, the deputy chief. As community need or don't need, depends on financial situation or any conflict, anytime we can eliminate that position. Thank you.
Next person.
No last name, but Abdul on Nola Street? Three minutes?
Salaam. Yeah, I'm here to, if you have a couple concerns?
Please speak up, since there's no speaker.
Oh, yeah. One concern is, uh, you know, like my friend Hamza said, the theft that's happening in our area in Oliver, Dorothy, Miller. That area is neglected. We don't have a lot of police patrolling there. I, uh, I wish we can have more police patrolling there. Another concern is, uh, I think code enforcement is, uh, we don't see any code enforcement in that area. It's neglected. Homeowners don't take, take care of their properties. So I hope, uh, with that issue as well, we can get some code enforcement to help there, probably, someday. Thank you.
You can infer this one, hopefully, then. Everybody else is complaining about excessive code enforcement, but, uh, you know, they need some, you know, get a ticket.
Ahmed Chada?
Hey, how's it going?
Oh, I'm sorry, you picked the second one. Do you want to speak now, or later?
Yeah, yeah, I can, if it's okay with you.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Ahmed Chada, I think everybody knows, I'm a human rights activist. On July 17th, I'm gonna take it that quick, I'm not here to speak for myself, and I am speaking for everybody. I was pulled over that night, I was doing community patrol, which is, we guess now, that was a move before the chief and the mayor as well, and issue of one of the city councils. So I was doing the patrolling, all of a sudden, I called for, you know, some people were drinking and inside the store. The owner asked me to call, I called, I identified myself. I had a pepper spray gun on me, I'm licensed, all that does not matter. Uh, 30, 32nd or a minute later, two cars of the Hamtramck police followed me. Uh, I felt that was unlawful, detained, unlawful, stopped. Uh, what happened is, the reason, I'm not here to tell a story, so what happened is, they know that was me. I get stopped, they don't tell me the reason, as soon as given my license. What happened is, they said, if you're not gonna get out of the car, we're gonna drag you. All this, it's, it's fine with me. So what, what happened after that, which is really, I think, has humiliated, and, and officers need to be more training. Uh, they said detained window, I said I'm licensed for that. I have my license for that, which is the, what do you call it? Anyway, from the doctor, in my car, it's, it's exemption, and he won't take it, he's not really gonna take it. He asked me if I have a gun, I said I got a pepper spray gun. I work with the community patrol, he said, we don't care. And, uh, all of this with me is still fine. So after that, he took me out of the car. Okay, I was detained for an hour and a half. I tell them I'm licensed, I tell them I work for the city of Hamtramck. I tell them, actually, clearly, they can call the chief, because I was passing by his house. I tell them, I just see you officer a minute ago, so all of that, I'm not a criminal. All of this was denied it for me. They won't even look at my paperwork, I was taken and fingerprinted. Okay, all of this, I don't want it to be happened, I'm not against the city, honestly. I just, still, my question is to the chief of police, I, I think I've been unlawful stopped. Uh, what happened today, uh, the case was dropped. I was here to dig up my, my, uh, retrieve my, my pistol. I was still denied it to get my stuff back. I called the place that was, my pistol was issued, the police department was clear. This is, if the Hamtramck police have an issue with this, they can call, uh, your, your, your gun is registered, everything, it's lawfully correct. So I don't know if it's against me myself, I can get the hell out of the city, sorry for that word, because I feel discriminated, sorry, for that. And, and if you guys keep treating citizens like this way, all due respect, please find a way to educate officers how to do so. I'm not against it, please. I, as I've mentioned, you're not gonna see me in the city. I'm not gonna do no community patrol, I was treated that way, which is, do you want to know it's me, Mr. Max, and, and, and city? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Omar Amasani?
Salaam alaikum. What's up? Been a US citizen, actually, city of Hamtramck citizen for the last 40 years since I was born. Um, where to start? As I've been sitting down for the last 75 minutes, there's a lot of things going on. Um, I'm always at work all day, and, uh, so I know most of the people here, and when I have an issue, I come talk to usually the mayor, Max, you know what I mean? And they try to help me out whatever they can. Um, I'm sure an issue that's well-known, I don't know if it's part of it, but I just want to say it, taxes, they are going up, I understand. People that are working, they can afford it, it's fine. But the people that can't afford it, and nothing can be done, because you guys are going by the book. I heard that mileage, I'm sure somebody's in this room is able to fix the mileage. It's a mileage, or whatever you want to call it, it has to go lower. If it means doing something else, it's fine, but you guys need to figure that out to take it down a little, to bring people back. People are coming here from New York, from California. I mean, that's something that's, everybody should be looking up to, but when they have to come and pay double, triple, five, six, seven times the price, and on top of that, pay taxes on top of, it's ridiculous. That's number one. Number two, Kinef, I did talk to the mayor about it, he did tell me, it's in the works. Every time I drive down Conant, if I miss turning left, um, if I make it, if I turn left on Kinef, I find an alley and I leave, because it's a mess. It was perfect a couple years ago, and then all these things kept going, kept going, then somehow, I mean, I believe it's in the works, but I wish it's in the works faster, because it's very bad. It makes us a little bit, city of Hamtramck, you guys go down alleys, they're cleaner than Kinef. Alleys, there's an alley on Comstock. I went there yesterday with the kids biking, and it's beautiful. I wish that was Kinef. You know what I mean, between Conant and Just Compo. Uh, another thing is, about a month ago, there was a police chase and, uh, down the alley, right here on Avaline. And, uh, my kids went to the store, which is right across the alley, and they were in, thank God, they were inside the store, and there was a car coming so fast, and it hit the garbage can right next to my house. My heart dropped. And, okay, it's an alley, I understand alleys, you guys put, you know, speed bumps down the school, it's fine, it's real. But if alleys are brand new, obviously, the first thing you're gonna do is speed, right? If it's a clean alley, that's what they're gonna do. So, I, and I heard there were two incidents the last week or two weeks where a girl got hit, and I believe a girl passed away, light hammer. Uh, so, that too, I believe behind the mosque. My kids, one is nine, one is five, I tell them, hold each other's hand and walk to the, walk to the mosque and pray. And I believe that the, there should be speed bumps somewhere around there. That's something that needs to be done. Um, I appreciate everybody for being here tonight, and, uh, like I said, and Max is very helpful, whenever you need something, just ask. Ask, you don't have to say yes or no, but just ask, and hopefully he gets it right off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, did you need to speak?
I, I just, Kinef, because I know there's a lot of confusion, and I get a high frequency about Kinef. We were supposed to get the state share of the money, because part of it is on the state, part of it is from us. So they delayed their share. Uh, they didn't release it due to some, uh, you know, some reservations about the historic buildings, and they had to do investigation. I don't know, we were supposed to fix the street, not the building. And then they delayed the amount of money that they're supposed to give us. And after so many calls, they finally agreed to release it. So hopefully, we'll start working soon. Uh, and after the city manager, and after the company that will do the construction, that it must get done before the end of the year.
That's for us, it's for all of us, okay?
So hopefully, it, it's gonna be fixed, so.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question. So when you say it's gonna get started, it's already the end of the year, you know, September, October? Do you think they will be able to get it done by the end of November, December? Because if it's not started, then it's gonna be a big mess. People don't know what they're under the snow, and many cars are gonna get broke down in the middle of the street.
The state of, so we're, we're completely on the state of Michigan timeline, councilman. Um, and the bid letting for that, I believe, is the 6th here of September. So as soon as the state allows us to basically let the bid out on their timeline, not ours, um, the contractor will be selected, and then the contractor technically has 45 days to sign the contract. Now, do I think it'll take 45 days to sign the contract? Absolutely not. Um, and we're actually hoping that one of the contractors that have done the other areas of Kinef or Holbrook is the one that gets it, and is already familiar with the city, and we're praying that we can roll right into it. So, um, it should go pretty quick after that, I believe. Um, and then we're also trying to get a plan together on, on how we proceed, knocking out Kinef, try to save as much time as possible. But everything we do is full steam ahead on that, but we are 100% dependent upon the state of Michigan, because, um, it's their money. So we, we can't jump ahead, if we do, we don't get the money. So, um, as soon as they allow us to start, we're rolling with it. We're not, we're not gonna hold up any, anything at all.
Worst case scenario, actually, we should have a plan there, how far it can go, instead of ripping the whole street same time and waiting to get done. We can plan there, how far can we go, and, and reap that much, and then if we have to wait for the next year.
So as of right now, councilman, we're looking at doing it in two sections, and closing Kinef entirely in those two sections. We estimate that we'll save an extra three weeks by doing it that way. So, um, if we knock out the first section, everything's good, then we move right on, but it's exactly what we're doing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia Strong?
Good evening, mayor, council, president and council. My name is Alicia Strong, and I'm from the treasurer's office, the Wayne County Treasurer's Office, representing Mr. Eric Sabree, who's our treasurer. I am here to remind everyone that we are here and available to serve. We have a new, a number of programs, just to remind you all, for down payment assistance, as well as programs to keep homeowners in their homes. Also, currently, we are starting to foreclose on tax year 2022. And Hamtramck is a city that has a number of foreclosures, so we definitely want to be able to assist in that. I'm going to leave my cards, I'm gonna pass them around, I left some literature as well. Couple of things I want to remind everyone. November 21st is our Veterans Resource Fair. We have the largest Veterans Resource Fair in the state. Also, it is auction time. The auction list is out online for you to view, and it is also time for you to register. The first one takes place in September, the second one is in October. And last but not least, first responders do not have to put a down payment if they are behind on their taxes, first responders and veterans. And I left the flyer for that also. And again, I'm Alicia Strong, I'm gonna leave my cards, I'm gonna pass, pass it here and ask everyone to pass it around, and we are here to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll pass them out at the end of the meeting.
Sure.
Thank you. Mohammed Alghain?
Greetings, everybody. My name is Mohammed Alghain, actually a Detroit resident.
My name is Mohammed Alghaheem, actually Detroit resident. First of all, I would like to welcome the chief, Jamal, you be the whatever. Welcome to Hamtramck, welcome to home. I only got one, two points actually. First of all, I think we need night shift workers, cops. The morning, I see like ten of them. Where is it, mate? And second of all, I think bicycling, I think it's a big, bad mistake. And third of all is meters, you're slowing down businesses. You can't even park like nothing. So I think we need to resolve these three issues. Thank you very much, guys.
Marcia Florence?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmen and residents. My name is Marcia Florence, and I am producer and host of a television show called Just Ask, Education and Resource Program for the Disabled and Elderly Caregivers. And I'm a retired social worker from the state of Michigan. I work here in Hamtramck at the Denton Office and the office down below. I am on my fourth annual Health and Fun Tour event, which will be held this October sixth, October thirty at the Eastern Market, Shade Number Five. And we would like to invite the residents of Hamtramck to come out and join us. It is my job to make sure that we have diversity in our programs and provide resources for everyone who is in need. So my specialty is persons with disabilities. However, we do know we have caregivers' concerns, elderly persons' concerns. So we ask if council could consider having residents brought to our event by bus or cars or whatever. It is a full day of fun activities, free food, free entertainment. And we're asking if anyone is bilingual, that they would be willing to join the volunteer group to make sure that persons who are language concerned, we have those available for them to. And there will be a lot of volunteers for our visually impaired as well as wheelchair users. Thank you. May I leave these posters with council?
I'll take them.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Marcia.
Marcia, Marcia, when you can do available, we have the halal food for people that, people learn from Hamtramck.
I'm sorry?
Halal food. It's culture, culture of halal. That's why I say that you guys want to enjoy this video, the halal food. Because people in Hamtramck, majority of Muslims, and they join to your program, and they want to eat, they'll look for halal food.
What we will do is, we, I'm coming early so I can find out what is it that we need, okay? Even if we have to translate the posters in a different language, we need to know that. So anything that we need to do prior to, that's what we need to know so that we can take care of that. So if anyone calls, and my number's on there as well, and I'll give out a card, if we know in advance, we're going to handle that. Because it's important to make sure that all cultures know the same type of medical resources that are available without feeling like they're being left out. And that is my job, has always been my passion as a social worker. So I will handle that.
Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Derek Hale?
Good evening to Mayor, city council members, clerk, chief of police, and point teams. My name is Derek Hale, and I'm the, one of the community representatives for Commissioner Martha Scott. This is my first meeting. Glad to be here. Or remember years ago when I was a young child, we used to come up and down Kenef and Joseph Campo and shop. So I'll be back, do with some more of that. I just wanted to introduce myself to you. If there's anything that you need from our office, from the Commissioner, you can give her a call at three one three two two four oh eight seven eight. And then I would also like to thank everyone who participated in the last election and was able to help facilitate the Commissioner's reelection bid. Again, thank you. If you have any questions or concerns, please go ahead and take the call at office. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all for public comments, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So we will move to the consent agenda. And this is approved with single motion or no discussion. We have item A, approval of minutes from the August thirteen, two thousand twenty-four regular city council meeting. B, approval of invoice register date ending August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No objections? All right, thank you. All right, we'll move to the new businesses, and we have first resolution, twenty twenty-four dash one eleven, authorizing the installation of speed bumps in the West Corning Alley between Vermont and Trobridge.
Offer?
All right, discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Hassan?
Last council meeting also, we heard about this from the community members. And it's very important. I personally spoke to Police Chief also, and he's, I mean, city manager. And we need a resolution, that's why we brought the resolution. And I believe we need it and we have to approve it. And I'm supporting it.
More discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Hassan?
Yes. I got a motion for this resolution. I want amendment for this resolution, one one, one one one, to allow UCC town stall speed home behind the center. And I don't want to be open the door for other thing.
So you want to amend it?
Yeah, I want to amend this resolution to allow? To allow by UCC to do a stall speed home under the A UCC.
Their funding?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do I have?
By behind, by CC center.
So that's amendment, the motion to amend it?
Yes.
Mayor, if I could clarify, speed bump rather than hump, there's a significant difference. The humps are, we actually have to remove the concrete and put them in, and there's not really enough room back there. If anything, it would be speed bumps. Just for point of clarity.
Yeah, we're working hard for this alley. When we make it cement anchoring, if they do a UCC center, the speed home, it's going to be the rubber. It's not, it's not going to be the cement or the asphalt.
Is there a second for?
Hold a second, if you have a discussion.
Okay, go. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
No, but UCC, I saw, I saw some display, I saw your mouse.
Please pick up our most.
It is.
No speaker, that's why I apologize.
Okay. So yes, it is a busy crowded area, and may need the speed home. But we drive chairs when you go to the, what is called, machine in Detroit, and chairs, big mass there. I saw they have some speed home, Daraba speed home, they are this, I don't know how city installed it or someone installed it. And I'm driving city, they are fixing the alleys, and these are nice, beautiful alleys also. And people come with the mask, but for the safety reason, I support the speed home. But I like to be, speed bump, I like to be to the something, the rubber with those things. Let's see the first test case, how it goes through. And a lot of other people, if they're going to see, I'm positive a lot of other people business and mask, they might ask him also. And we'll see what we can do for this. But at this moment, we test case, we're saying to see the rubber, rubber one speed bump on there, let's see what's going on. Mr. Chair, if nobody speak, I want to clarify something.
Okay, go ahead.
So first, we have to understand what is the hump, what is the bump? Second, hold on. Second, why UCC fund? Why we cannot do from the city and city fund goes to there and put the bump?
The ordinance for the city is not allowed.
Hold on, hold on.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, first one, Hassan.
So why city not allow? I don't understand. There is any restriction? I'd like to know from Mr. Atoney and Mr. Manager.
Sorry, what is the question exactly?
Question is the one, speed bump, I want to use the city money for safety purpose to the alley, the speed bump, is the city cost? I didn't see any restriction.
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me?
Yes.
So, councilman, I believe you're asking, can the city install them? Was that your question?
Yeah, safety, safety bumpers.
I mean, yes, we physically can install them if the council so wishes to do that. There are definitely pros and cons to whatever we do. I mean, speed humps, for example, are probably definitely not wanted because they're very large, there's probably not enough room there. So just to clarify, if anything we are speaking about would be speed bumps, which are much smaller and usually placed in areas like, you know, you see them in apartment complexes and such.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I get my answer. There's no problem for the money, no problem for the fund. Experimental, we are doing the speed bump, that's all we are doing. And it's going to be a city cost.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, something? He was not done.
I was just going to say, there are pros and cons to doing this. Plowing could be a potential issue. We do put speed humps on side streets for plowing purposes because they're much larger, the plows can see them, they can essentially go over them. Speed humps don't tend to last as long. They get hit a lot. I mean, the city could install them, UCC could install them, whoever installs them, there's a high likelihood we could knock them out. The one thing we have been doing with the city plowing is, I've been having the plows hit those alleys specifically around congested areas, essentially such as the mosques or churches or anywhere we know. And that would cause an issue potentially if we put speed humps back there for plowing purposes. I was also advised by our DPW that there is a potential for actually flow of ice and snow back there, that it could get, it could actually dam it up even more and make it worse. I mean, so there are pros and cons to whatever we do. Yes, would speed humps slow down traffic potentially? But there's an offside of, we may not, we're not going to be able to plow it. And if we do, we could damage them and it may not get cleared. So I mean, there's, you know, whatever council decides for us to do, we'll do it, but it's not always the best, so.
Mr. Chair, you have done here.
Councilman Sumari, and then you go back.
Yes. We're against the UCC to do that one. But I don't want to be open the door to do this issue, they're going to be if from to do that one. If they want to do, the UCC to do that one, a lot of people, they're going to be donation. We didn't need the city to spend for that one. I have a motion, we need to do that one for the, when I close the motion. Can we make the vote?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Hassan, go ahead.
Okay, so the, all the mosques, Al Islam mosques, Hall Blue masks, they're cleaning, they are slow on, there is no problem with that. So we are doing the experimental, protect the safety issue to the speed bump. If city money is go no restriction, we don't have problem. If anyone want to donate, it's no problem either. But we need to have a speed bump, they are, that's all my resolution. If anybody want to put the money, no question, is always welcome. But it has to take the, start with the city responsibility, and city money will install. If somebody want to do the UCC, it's okay. If somebody want to do the Hamtramck, city is still okay. We want to approve the bump. How, who going to do it, is up to city knows. So that's all my resolution here.
Mr. Chair, if you want to go ahead? Yeah, I agree with Councilman Elsmeri and also Mayor Potem on allowing, or giving permission to UCC to install this bump, hump, or whatever you want to call it, in the alley. Like our city manager have mentioned, there's, there's ups and downs to either a hump or speed bump, a bump to in the alleys. I do support Councilman Elsmeri's amendment to this motion. And to add that, there is no member, board members of UCC here, sitting here today.
It's only to represent, I'm here to represent.
Okay, sir. So if there is no member here, and then, you know, that doesn't really push, you know, if they want it or not. So we did, we did talk to them, they do understand to, to work with them in a way what's, what's best for them. Again, I agree with Councilman Elsmeri.
Mr. Mayor, I think this one. Is anyone before me?
No, you go, go ahead.
Thank you, appreciate it. So since we can't do the humps, we can't even bring it to the discussion, I think this is out of discussion. Bomb, I mean, we're talking about a small fraction of money, how much it's going to cost? And if you open the door to other people going to donate money to the city, then everybody say, I need a speed bump on my street and I'll donate money. I think this is the ideal way to move for us. So since it's a nonprofit or charity organization, nonprofit organization, religious purpose, and if it's important to do it, you know, if it's risk involved to this situation, then we should do it. But I mean, asking people to donate money, I don't think this is something that we need to do for the city of Hamtramck. We're talking about very small fraction of money, that is not a huge something that we're doing, million dollar project.
Mr. Chair, so we don't go back and forth, there is a amendment resolution there, there was a second. Can we vote? And then we go from there.
All right, yes, we can vote on the amendment that Sumari suggested.
Sure. Councilman Hassan?
No.
Councilman Elsmeri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
No.
Councilman Sidman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution, well amendment resolution, twenty twenty-four one eleven to approve speed bumps on mosques budget has been approved.
Thank you. All right, so now we need to vote on the amended resolution.
Correct.
Yes. Can we amend it? It's amendment approved, so we need to vote on the amended. Yes.
I need approval on the amended resolution.
Yes.
I motion? A second.
Councilman Hassan?
No.
Councilman Elsmeri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
No.
Councilman Sidman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-four one eleven approved.
All right, well, then we move to the next one then. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one twelve, to honorally rename Burger Street in memory of Amina Anaya.
Motion?
Second. All right, any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Hassan.
Okay, this is a very pathetic, painful, the situation. Like a just example, like a burger street. We don't know who is burger. The generation is came here, if we have the name Amina, generation will remember who is Amina, how that happened, why she has to die, who healed, all those things has the history. So, and also, it was the family request. And rest of the, regarding of this incident, I will speak later on, but about the street, that's why we are supporting, that's why next generation will know why street name, who is she. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, what I'm going?
Thank you, we are renaming the street Burger by the Amina. This renaming doesn't bring her Amina back, but it is a memorial to today, tomorrow and future. And the beautiful girls, innocent girls were there. And she was killed by the school bus. And we do respect her and we love her. And right after this happened, I went to the house, meet the family, I feel the pain, how much it's suffering for those. So this is the reason we try to accomplish her, and try to rename her, memorialize her, leave her memories on the community. This is the reason I support those things, to rename the street name Aminas.
All right, thank you, thank you.
That's because they don't split unit.
It's covered.
Is it working?
Yeah, but they couldn't hear until they turned it off.
All right, so no more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, as I, thank you. Sorry, I was distracted, the AC is a little warm here. Now, that's good to have Amina name to the street. The purpose of, she's an innocent girl, you know, she, we're not going to go what happened, how happens, too far there, but you know, as an innocent girl, we get killed, you know, it is still our history. But this, because of she's a kid, you know, it's not that we're going to have name for every street, anyone to pass away or any accident happens, that's not the practice, I hope, in the future. It's because of innocent girls, you know, city and angel, we want to have the street name by the, by her.
Thank you. All right, yes, we can vote now?
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sidman?
Yes.
Councilman Elsmeri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-four one twelve approved.
All right, thank you. Next resolution is twenty twenty-four dash one thirteen, approving the purchase of Exxon camera, an audio system for police interview room.
Motion?
Second.
So I'll talk very briefly about the camera, and why is it so, so important, right? Most departments now have these devices that are integrated with our prosecutor's office. So a lot of times, when we do interrogate people, really, it's a simple microphone, a simple video cam. So a lot of times we have to upload it, sometimes when we do upload it, we, we miss a lot of things. Uh, I think this is gonna be good for the case, but also it keeps us, our work more ethical, but also provides integrity back on it, because now it's gonna be a lot, and you can't erase, you can't detach it, so prosecutor's office gets to see it right away. So helps us do our job a lot more efficiently. Exxon is a very reputable company that many departments, even New York City, use it, so it's coming out of the fun, I think our city manager probably could describe it more.
It is, it's going to be narcotics fund expenditure, Mr. Mayor. And plus, it actually will save time within the department as well, because they have to kind of jump through hoops now to download it the way it's set up. Um, this will make it much more efficient.
So, I mean, people, it looks like tonight, most of these people who attended today are concerned about what's happening outside of the city hall. And the last thing they care about is inside the city. It's, uh, we have seen videos that are very disappointing for some police officers' behavior when they came, when they encountered the suspects, the suspects that had been stealing cars for the past several years. And when they were, they had a chance to catch them, they just neglected the whole situation and, and so I don't know how people are feeling about, you know, buying more equipments for this, for the police, we just approved buying new cars, uh, cameras around the city, we approved, the 15 camera that costs a lot of money annually, tasers for the police, everything the police has asked, we approve it. Yet we were expecting a lot of work and, you know, expecting the police to take things seriously when it comes to people's concerns and complaints. So I don't know about this, it's up to the city council now, uh, because what's happening outside of the city hall is very concerning. And I think adding the resolution to discuss this with the police chief tonight is very important. So I don't know, if the city council wants to approve this, that's up to them, but I think it's one of the least concerns that we have tonight.
Mr. Chair?
The name?
Uh, city manager, you can go ahead and then Councilman Hassan.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, so I, in regards to the, I know you've mentioned an incident that we seen on Facebook, um, I don't wanna step on the chief's toes too much here, but that is under investigation, so I don't wanna comment specifically on that. But I can say definitively that all the technology this honorable body has approved for the PD has been very effective. Uh, the flock cameras, for example, um, all week long, they're catching hits and officers are making good arrests from those. Perhaps, maybe not tonight, I don't think the chief's prepared for that, but one of the upcoming council meetings, maybe the chief can give us a report on just how successful flock has been. Any technology that we put in the hands of our police officers make them that much more efficient in doing their job. Um, I, I would strongly caution against voting against something that is essentially gonna save the PD a lot of time and, and allow them to, for the most part, get back on the streets. You know, 'cause right now, it's kind of a clunky way of doing it, it's not the most efficient, it doesn't save, um, it doesn't save the footage as well. It frankly takes a lot more time than there is necessary. And anything you do to make the department run more efficient makes it that much better. Now, I, I do say that, you know, occasionally things happen which detract away from the public's trust, but again, I can assure you that the police chief is investigating that. I don't wanna get into that right now, but, um, you know, things like this are what makes the police department better and more effective in the long run.
Councilman Hassan, go ahead.
This is the, the money coming from outside, also this is gonna, uh, interview room gonna save us a lot of things. Somebody hide, somebody, uh, conversation was currently not recorded, so this is gonna be the good thing, um, I wanna approve it.
It's about eighty thousand a year, if I'm not mistaken, for the service. It's an add-on to the actual system we already use with Axon. It's basically, it integrates everything together. Um, Axon is what we use in the police cars, Axon is what we use for the body cameras. It's all uploaded automatically into the system and saved, um, basically on the cloud. So it takes out all the human error out of it, it basically locks it down.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question, um, I value your point. Police chief, do you think that any other things that important, we can invest money? I know it does not coming out from general funds, it coming from, uh, what is called the?
Narcotics. Narcotics.
Narcotics fund. So is there something else we can, like our public can get service, better service in the community? It's became a huge issue. Seems like nobody is happy, you know, I know you're working really hard, you know, always on the community and doing great job, but somehow, how can we provide more better service to the community than people can get happy? Because we always have issue with tax, they're paying high tax, they're doing all those, you know, necessary things need to be get done, but their service level is not as, compared to other cities, so that's make them frustrated.
So do you think? I would ask, we would bring the police chief in front of us, uh, when we get to the resolution, and then I, I think he would have a chance to answer this question. Well, I'm not saying I'm against this, but I'm saying this is the least important thing at this time. If it, if it's gonna ensure that the police force is working as a team and, you know, collaborating effectively with each other to serve that the community, and like I said, I have been defending the police since I came to office and providing them with everything possible, we, we have approved everything they ask for. This is nothing compared to what we have done before. So we will hear from the police chief later, if, I mean, if this is something important, I think it's important, it's up to you guys, you can approve it. But then our concern about the responsibility outside of the, you know, the street, people are worried, people, public safety is not at its best shape at this time, and we want to make sure that, uh, police force is effective and they are doing their job, just like they give the oath, you know, that they will serve the community. And they know this job comes with risks, we know that, it's not something that nobody knew. So we appreciate their service, but we have high expectations. That video, I'm gonna tell you the truth, it destroyed the trust completely between the community and the police, because they have seen something that was unexpected. And we have been building, you know, working to build trust between the community and the police for the past few years, one video destroyed everything we have been working on. So we will hear from the police chief later and, and see what can be done to, to fix that. Any more discussion?
No.
All right, we can vote on this.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Sidman?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-113 approved.
All right, thank you. Next one is resolution 2024, uh, 114 approving agreement for the development and sale of 12042, 12050, and 12056 Nagel Street.
Motion?
Second.
Mayor, I have Isabel here to talk in this, always excited about selling off property and new development, go ahead.
So these are three city-owned lots that CED has been working with applicant Natalie Grant. Natalie has her business partner here today, Chantay, who I'll invite up in just a moment. They run Legacy Homes of Michigan together, which is the company that they're planning to use to build a duplex unit on two of these lots and a single-family home on the other. My understanding from talking with them is that it's a trial run of sorts to try to gauge community receptiveness to their types of builds. They're excited to offer garages within the homes so that they can alleviate some of the street parking concern for buyers. So that will end up being ideally completed within 18 months of our execution of the development agreement with Natalie and Chantay. And we were happy to receive all the complete items and their application to move forward with this. And I'll invite Chantay up if you have any questions about the project. The plans were in your packet tonight, so I hope that you look at them, they, they do look very nice.
Mr. Chair? So I'm gonna say thank you for choosing Hamtramck to build in our city, absolutely all the revenue for our city, you guys are welcome with us, so thank you.
Thank you so much. So if it gets approved, what's the timeline for the start of this?
So the, um, the timeline, ideally, we're looking at 18 months total to, to build. We've already, uh, we already have an architect on hand to finish the drawings and the plans. The next step as well is to work with our lender, um, to just go through the, the approval process for the financing, and then we can start mobilizing our, our team and then we can break round after that. Can I show you a picture of the house? I think it looks really cool, so as much as I can try to help you guys.
That's a photo of the duplex unit?
The duplex, yeah, so that's a really cool design, so it's, you know, the driveways are right up to the two garages.
Suburban essence to the UCC.
You're very welcome, you're very welcome. Because of course, if, uh, if these are received, we will definitely want to continue our, our partnership for the city and, um, so that we can, um, build more, more houses in the area.
These are ways to open house.
Absolutely, thank you.
Ready to vote? Uh, Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Sidman?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-114 approved.
Thank you. The next one is resolution 2024-115 granting conditional site plan approval for the rebuild of a gas station at 12045 Joseph Pampa.
Motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have Isabel here, along with the owner of this upcoming project, another project we're very excited about. Uh, I'm not gonna steal it from her, go ahead. I wanna talk a lot of it.
Max is excited. Um, we're all excited to present this to you for conditional approval. This address is 12045 Joseph Pampa, which is the south corner of Joseph Pampa and Botsford. So it's within our CBD and our applicant successfully received all variances issued for this project. You can sort of see the renderings in my print of this report. The project would take an existing two buildings, including the existing gas station, demolish the existing structures, and then create one combined gas station with an automotive, automotive repair facility within that same building. And the only conditions that we attach to the motion or what we're proposing that council approve, just take into account the fact that the landscape plan is still in flux, so we are looking forward to working with the project and the architect to solidify that, they want to put trees in as are required in ordinances, some sort of landscaping, we just haven't ironed it all out yet. And then second, Joseph Pampa is a county road, so Wayne County Road Commission needs to evaluate the plans, they've been submitted to Wayne County for approval, so we recommend that council make that conditional approval just to account for Wayne County needing to sign off on the approaches.
Any questions? Mr. Chair?
I'm glad that you are continuing building your gas station here in the city of Hamtramck. That means a lot that you, you're now living somewhere else, 'cause you can go somewhere else where there are cities around that will give, you know, they will help you on taxes, will give you grants, but for you to stay in the city of Hamtramck, that means a lot. I wanna thank you very much. And we wish you all the best and whatever you need from this body to help you out to make this happen, we're ready.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
At this moment, do you have the gas station there?
What is it?
Yes.
Three times each side.
Thank you. I hope that the screen is working so you can show there.
They, they did have a chance to do it already, so they've seen it. Here you go.
There you go. That's a nice upgrade.
Councilman Rafai, we thank you, you know, you're spending money, we have all the small coffee shop opening and closing, but you take to something different direction there. Making money for yourself and make, you say our city will improve on this.
Maybe I will be the last one to make the money. So, yeah, thank you. I mean, I know that you have been trying to get some in the city from the zoning for the capital several years, so finally got approved, which is one of our goals, to help residents invest in our city. Thank you for investing your money here. And I hope the council will approve it, we haven't. So we can go ahead and vote on that.
Uh, Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sidman?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-115 approved.
All right, thank you.
So can you get free gas the first day?
Discount, discount to rate.
I'm getting my gas from him now.
My two family car, I'm gonna go there.
All right, thank you. And then the last one, they added resolution, which is a discussion of the public safety concerns, um, uh, and it's, uh, gonna be between the council and the police chief and the city manager, uh, so.
Mr. Chair?
Motion and second please.
Like to make the motion?
No, second. This is gonna be open.
Yes, open session, discussion. I'd like to bring the police chief, I have a few question, if you don't mind, can you please? So the incident happened Burger Street. I was so busy working seven days a week, suddenly family member last week came to me, I know the every family member over there, I went there because of police's investigation getting too late. I did my investigation, what I'm hearing from the people, the people who saw that, the driver was on cellular phone few times, I'm not telling you to clarify right now, that kinds of feedback I'm getting from the, from the street, from the, uh, the who I know. Second, there's the video already released, I don't wanna say more than that. Third, I overheard something is coming to the street, some officer saying, we don't care. So all kinds of, by the way, highest benefit in the United States, not only Michigan, this Hamtramck, that kinds of benefit nowhere, is the highest benefit ever in the United States in this city getting. Of course, I don't wanna disclose in front of all the people, how many day they're taking day off, how many was there, last 15 years, it was the mandatory manpower, it's kinds of dictatorship. That's why we brought the Michigan state here to dissolve that situation, they did it, but the one of the city manager, again, why I have to say, we trust all the city manager, but after they left, we see that they did some destroy us. One of the city manager did not tell us or lie to us actually, everything okay, manpower there is no issue, but she or he did sign with the restriction, manpower and city go back to that poll again. So again and again, long time ago, we decided to lay off everybody. I, we, we had a strong council, not like this, very strong council, speaker, and, you know, I, I wanna thanks one of the, and I'm here, okay? So it's our city, it's our tax money. One of the guy saying like about the house, I'm referring that one, there is something we can do it, but we not doing positive thing, we feel sometimes we doing negative thing. So I'm questioning you, why the Burger Street incident, police report is still not released? Can you speak? Mr. Attorney, can he speak?
Yeah, I think it's a current investigation, I'm not sure you can say.
Okay, so if it is investigation, release the video, why it's still investigation either three years or three months, it's for me three years because there's somebody died. So I went within one week. So I went within one week. What kinds of investigation going on, I wanna know. Close session, within one week, I want that report goes to his attorney or anybody from his family member come, we wanna finish up, it's enough, it's enough. If our police department doing the investigation, please, we don't need that long.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. I'm gonna steal this from the police chief. I have a little bit of insight into that case and that case is still a hundred percent under investigation. It is at the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office, um, being reviewed. So we are, our hands are tied on moving forward. The investigation, um, was swiftly done on the police departments and submitted. Um, but there is active work happening on that behind the scenes, but we can't speak on it beyond that.
Mr. Mayor, so you said police report was done and submit to the Wayne County?
That is correct.
So why people lawyer instantly cannot have that?
Because as a rule, um, we do not release, um, reports at all, um, that are under investigation. Now, I know that some attorneys did kind of backdoor their way into getting that, unfortunately, um, which was out of the police department's control. But as a rule, if a case is under investigation, the police, the police reports are not released, um, that's something that Wayne County prosecutors and police departments do across the board.
Okay, so police report, if someone come, they cannot have the police report, I don't believe that. So we're gonna go to Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. If we can help from them, that is gonna be problem. And just one...
So I, I think that just to clarify, um, what, um, so what happened here was the crash report was what some attorneys, I don't know which attorneys, but from what I understand, some attorneys got their hands on a report, it was only the crash report. The crash report's very, it just says there's a crash, here were the people involved and it's for attorneys who do lawsuits, uh, with car accidents generally. That's why it's available through other means and not through going through the department. The actual police report with, um, with more investigative, uh, uh, substance is what would be more relevant and that is definitely not something that can be released until after Wayne County. So that's what's gonna, so just to clarify, the car accident report, I think, is much more minor than the actual police report, which will be coming once...
So I'm requesting now, I'm requesting from the school bus system, camera release, that time. Okay, can you take that one now, please, Mr. Police Chief?
There's no way to tell me I'm...
Okay, well, it's a part of you, please.
So any, Councilman, any video that's seized by the police department are part of the case and evidentiary. Um, not to mention videos of extreme graphic nature are generally not released either. Um, that's not to say that over the years attorneys haven't fought and got those, but, um, I don't think it's good policy for the city to release graphic footage, um, of an accident of a little girl on a school bus.
Well, this is very important for them. They wanna see the camera, but then the residents telling is true then. That's why we're not getting the camera release early as possible. So, okay, I want you to, uh, talk to Prosecutor's Office, talk to our attorney, uh, as soon as possible, uh, release that one. So that's all my, because second, the, the other day, uh, Mr. Police Chief, uh, the, the dispatch, that lady, she did to me the same thing. Somebody hit my car and gone. And I came out, if I call police, it's gonna come ten, fifteen minutes late. Suspect already gone far away, is in somewhere. So when I came here, she looking for the insurance, this and that, it's not even her business. Uh, second, uh, I think there is something we feel. If anything you feel, uh, from the police department, under your management, if anything you see or any problem you getting from anybody to doing your job, we wanna clearly know, that's all. How you, how your department you running, you feel comfortable?
Yeah, um, obviously, look, one of your, one of your new police chief coming from, uh, you know, new city, um, there's gonna be some challenges that, that we may face. And I think working with the city manager and addressing some of those challenges. And obviously, we wanna implement some changes that, uh, we announced honestly with the, uh, especially with Comstat, we created a, you know, crime data database that we're trying to promote and be more transparent, not only with the public, but also keep our office's bias of the crime trends or the stats that's going on within the city makes our, our job, you know, job doing better. Uh, when it comes to personnel, um, obviously, there's some contractual issues. So sometimes you can't move certain people due to certain contracts that are in place. However, we love to, you know, we're working with the city manager and addressing those issues.
Excuse me, sir. So conflict and contradictory, contradictory things you say you getting. I don't care who is manager, it's your department. If nobody listen your direction, suspend him, take action right there, no question.
So, uh, Mr. Police Chief, uh, we mentioned the video that was released, that like I said, it destroyed the trust between the community and, and the police. Now, they think that the police, uh, is acting all the time, just like what they saw in the video. Like, I don't care about what's happening to the residents as, uh, and especially at night. So I got so many calls about that specific video and I think we need to hear from you. Have you done some investigation about that? And what's the reason, anything justify what, what we saw in that video? Why the police didn't want to, uh, follow those people? Why didn't they call for assistance? Why didn't, even they turned the light on to scare them? They didn't do any of these. So is there a reason for that? And have you investigated that? And is there any actions you will take to correct that?
Yeah, um, I'm a mayor, um, like the city council. Um, when I first saw the video, I was very upset, you know. I expressed my upset to the leaders within the department, the deputy chief, as well as the lieutenants. Um, so, uh, devised a plan how to address some of those issues. And when you look back and speaking to the officers, uh, obviously, the, the job that we do, you know, we, the, the, the stresses that we face on the other basis, it's very stressful job. I mean, you can just recall not too long ago, our officer Mohammed Said, you know, stopped someone and makes, you know, he's being shot by someone he didn't expect to have a gun. Now, we understand these dangers, but at the same token, uh, we took an oath to protect the citizens of Hamtramck. Uh, that's since the United States of America, that's kind of what our job entails. Sometimes we have to face danger head on. Uh, but we do it very safely tactically, right? And, uh, the video, it really, you know, it's, I'm not gonna just record it. It was disturbing, they, they could have done a lot more. I mean, you see them walking around in the car, they go back in. But we don't know what's in their mind, frame, mindset. We're still kind of investigating, see what kind of, uh, measures that we're gonna take or need to be taken. However, I did notice that in the midnight, during the late hours of tour, we needed some more supervision. So I, um, so I moved the lieutenant detective commander, uh, to midnight patrol. Uh, that's not an easy move, obviously, you could imagine someone that does daytime, uh, you know, works in the days and investigates cases, now he's being sent to midnight. Now, a lot of, some people might see that as punishment, not a punishment. It's actually because this person, individual person is very good when it comes to tactics. He's one of our best tactical supervisors and I think him being in midnights will, uh, address those issues, those tactical issues with those officers. But also, we need extra eyes. And then they, cops need leadership and we need more leaders and we need better supervision, uh, especially during late hours.
So we have also seen some clear pictures from, uh, other residents that they, they caught these people and they posted those pictures online, very clear, their face, their faces are very clear. Uh, did you get a, uh, you know, copy of these pictures? And are you, is the police department working on, you know, trying to identify these people and catch them cooperating with Detroit and other cities?
Yeah, and, um, since, you know, since arriving here, um, you know, great communication with, with the Chief of Detroit, Chief Whitehead, as well as his deputies. And there's a lot of things that we're doing, we're sharing even the cameras. We have M O U together, you know, with certain things and technology that we share. So, yeah, obviously, yeah, getting help from Detroit is very, very important to catch some of these perpetrators. Um, we did, uh, you know, our teams doing, you know, investigative, uh, tasks, uh, our play. We do have a picture of them, but not as clear as we would like. Uh, but, um, um, just, uh, just a reminder to everyone, uh, not too long, uh, last night, we had a, a foot chase, someone actually stole the vehicle. And fortunately, one of our vehicles was struck by reckless driver. However, the good thing was we did grab these two individuals. And when we grab these individuals, obviously having that technology that we just mentioned earlier with Exxon, because we wanna interrogate them and maybe get some really good footage, so that will help us. So everything comes into play, I just, uh, I know there's been a lot of complaints, um, about, uh, follow-up with some detectives, that's something that we look to address. And our deputy chief, he's responsible for the detective squad as when the lieutenant is working the, the night or days, like later days. So, yeah, there, there's a, there's a lot of issues that we could address. Obviously, training is one of them and we're trying to get more training. We have a list of train that's coming up soon for the detectives, but as well as the officers.
So, uh, you know, the conclusion of this is that this is the main concern for the residents. I mean, this is the, the worst thing that they can think of, to, to go inside their home and thinking that their car, their cars can be stolen at any moment. And, and this is the pressing issue at this time. We, we want the police to focus on that because if they behave like we have seen on the video and say, "I don't care", that's not something we are happy about because we know this job comes, comes with a risk. Like you said, you know, we lost a Yemeni-American police officer, uh, in the line of duty. So we know it comes with risk, but we know that these people are, uh, were brave enough to accept this job and to accept to be public servant and, and, and they know it comes with risk. So we, we, while we appreciate their service, we expect a lot from them to protect us. Because other, you know, otherwise, we will form community members to walk at night in the street and, and guard and, you know, like the citizen patrol to replace the police that, you know, we just... The other thing I wanna mention is, is, uh, there's a lady with a, a video scratching cars while she's walking with her dog, very clear video, scratching cars while she's walking, you can hear even the scratch. The, the lady called the police, brought them there, showed them the video. They made a report that, yes, it's clear this lady scratched a couple of cars walking. Detective went to the house of this lady, she said, "No, it's not me." He went back, he closed the case. This is very, you know, very disturbing that the person whose car was, was scratched, reached out to me, showed me the videos, showed me that the case was closed, the, the case was closed based on the suspect that she said, "No, I didn't do it." But it's clear, you can see it. So this is some kind of selective, you know, enforcement. While some police officer went to some kid's house and scared the hell out of them due to minor stuff and took them to the city hall, interrogated them and with their parents. They went to this lady and said, "Oh, it's not me." They said, "Okay, fine, please, uh, close the case." This is unacceptable and, and we would like to hear from you about this kind of behavior as well.
Yeah, so a lot of these, you know, concerns, they do come to me and, you know, as you can see, I, sometimes I have a, you know, I'm very open and you see me in the community, so I do hear a lot of these complaints, the concerns. I do bring it up to attention to the city manager as well as deputy chief and also staff there. I don't wanna go to individual, uh, you know, cases in particular, but this one in particular, actually, we, we opened that case and it's in the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office to look further. So, um, yeah, a lot of times if, if there's any not, we believe the case not being follow-up, uh, it's, it's, it's great to bring it up to me and to, uh, to make sure it gets addressed. But, um, two days ago, I just hired a new, uh, well, a new position that we didn't historically have. He's going to be an integrity control officer. So this person is gonna get internal affairs training that I approved through the Wayne County's office and he's gonna be assigned to these cases and address some of these issues. So when you do get complaints of officers maybe not following, not misconduct, complaints, other issues, you said selective, that's a city, you know, get, take that very seriously. We have someone now in place that reports to me and, um, addresses those matters. So I think that's a, it's a good step and, um, uh, but even though we're talking about a lot of negatives, but I just wanna mention some of the, the great positives. These officers are really doing a great, great work out there. I mean, I, I watched them every day, I'm very proud of the work that they're doing. I just think, believe that we need a little more better leadership and that starts with me here and promoting that, uh, downwards and, you know, and look forward to addressing some of these issues. But also, I'm, I'm proud of being a Hamtramck police chief and that's why I wear this patch. And I know a lot of officers don't wear this patch, but I'm promoting, um, the patch back and put it on the uniform just like many departments. The reason why is that we want them to feel special, we want them to feel like, you see this right here? This is who you serve, the city of Hamtramck, it's, it's the city, it's really the people of Hamtramck. So, um, look forward to working with the city manager and addressing some of those issues in a, in a positive way and constructive manner. Uh, sometimes we don't get it right, no, the police department is a hundred percent. But it's important that we, you know, that you hold us accountable, but at the same token, kind of give us a chance to understand our point of view when it comes to certain things. And also, as a police chief, it's my responsibility to have the tools necessary to address some of these issues that you, that we may face.
Thank you. I don't want anybody to understand that we are against the police officers. As, as you may have heard me in every speech and any occasion, any event, I always thank the police and, uh, compliment them, mention that the crime rate, you know, has been decreasing. But we, you know, what happened lately is something very disturbing. And while we are in the process of negotiating a new contract for the police department, given resident stuff, we, we watch some kind of behavior that makes us, you know, uh, you know, take things slowly and, and, um, analyze what's happening before we, we move on and approve things. I mean, we would like to, uh, provide you with anything that you need and giving you all the benefits that you deserve, uh, and all the police officers, but also a return of, uh, uh, good and, uh, ethical public service that we expect from them. And, uh, my last question before I move to the other, uh, council members. Do you think you are working in a friendly environment and getting all the cooperation and assistance that you need? Working as a team with the rest of the police officer? Because this is very important to know. We know that every change is, is difficult and there might be some resistance to change. So is there any concerns? Because while you report to the city manager, we don't get a chance to hear from you. We would like now, uh, as well as the public to hear from you. Is, is everything, uh, the transitional period is moving smoothly and, and you're getting the, the teamwork and the cooperation that you expect? That's something very important for the stability of the police department.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting because we just had, it's, it's, it's interesting how you brought up that question and we just had discussion about some matters earlier, not that it's presidential, but, um, city manager has been supportive. There's some things that they're addressed to him. He's obviously, uh, been supportive since the very beginning. And we look forward to, you know, address, uh, issues wherever they may be. I mean, uh, there's no impossible for anyone to come from any city or place, that he's not gonna face any challenge. It was just, that's just the way life is. I think we have to, um, accept those challenges and find solutions. And not just, uh, you know, focus on the complaints, but just find solutions. That's something that we're working together with the city manager. You know, I know a lot of people might see, because, uh, the two people that wanted to be police chief have worked for me and sometimes you might see that as a conflict, which, you know, from the outside, people might see that and might come to your attention. For the most part, um, I don't see it as a challenge. And if there are issues, I bring it to our city, city manager. And then we, we address them because it wasn't easy starting first, uh, you know, youth academy to, something new for this department, but also even the Comstat, the thing with being transparent. When I first started that, there was a little misconfusion. While we releasing numbers, uh, complete numbers on a weekly basis to the community, I think that, I think we're now, it's been about a month and a half, they kind of got used to the, the logic of it and they seen the beauty of it. Because when you say, and I think the community says, "Hey, crime is up in Hamtramck," right? And a lot of it is based on perception, it could be an illusion, but we wanna face it. We wanna tell people the facts and reality and that's why we created this system here. So it's give you the facts and not just perception. Because sometimes on Facebook, we might see things or hear things that are not a hundred percent accurate, but we wanna make sure we address it with facts. I appreciate, you know, the mayor, you know, the council, um, you know, you, you brought me here based on your trust. And I think that, that was the key thing that you, uh, you wanted from me, that we, we trust in you to fix things and make it better. And it's the same thing I, I... And it's the same thing I request from people that work under my leadership, that they trust my leadership, and that we, you know, we do things in a professional manner, and that they believe in me, believe in what we're going to do, and what we're going to face, and how we're going to make it better. At the end of the day, it's not making Jamil Al Tahiri, this chief, you know, famous, or a lot of times on Facebook, it's not, it doesn't do that. It's really, this Hamtramck Police Department want to make it better. And I just want to thank everybody for supporting the Hamtramck Police Academy. I know I didn't mention some names on the superintendent, I'll put it out here now, so I apologize for that, I did not really see him. I know you were there, and I'm also, Jamil, and Shadi, everybody that helped, you know, I, but we try to be a very inclusive city, and that's something I instill into my officers, make sure that we're inclusive, that we treat people fairly, respectfully, and that we got to move on, and we got to make this department go forward. And I think the city manager brought up, with the Exxon, with the technology, those are, that's going to make our city even better, and more safer. And like I said, at the end of the day, I'm a resident here. I'm not only speaking as a police chief, but I'm a resident. I want to make sure my son walks on Tro Bridge, or families going to the sidewalk, they're safe. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor? May I say something? Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out that it is unfortunate that when occasionally negative incidents happen, that, you know, of the tens of thousands of good interactions the police department has in any given year, it takes one incident to take away from all that. But I have full faith that the police chief is doing a good job, and will address any concerns or problems that arise, and has done so thus far, and I believe will continue to do so. And we're definitely working as a team to make sure that happens.
Thank you. So the reason we mention this is because it's a very concerning thing, and the next day after that video was released, I know one of the victims, my cousin, his car was stolen. So it comes like, almost to where you identify people whose cars are stolen on daily basis, and that makes us worry, and the community worry. So that's, that's a priority for us now. And as long as you have, you know, the opportunity to implement your plans inside the police department without any problems, without any resistance, without any, you know, disturbing of the teamwork, that's fine with us. I mean, we're here to support you, and support the police department, and expect some positive outcomes. Mr. Mayor, pretend, and councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity. People believe justice delay, sometimes justice denied too, regarding the Amina's case. City attorney and city manager, what is the timeframe they can get the police report? If there were any timeframe, next two, next three is.
So Wayne County's been notoriously slow. I've mentioned that to you guys before about various other cases, but with this case, I think they, hopefully, will be a little quicker. I would say that maybe one to two weeks before they make a decision, and then after that. It could be, it could be longer, but that's my guess.
Thank you. Mr. Police Chief, I do not repeat everything, so whatever, Mr. Mayor and Council Hassan discussed already, but I hope in close session, we can go more specific. And not there, more specific, we can find out some solution. And if you don't feel a cooperative way, at least simply discuss with the mayor, city manager, and come to us also, by the city manager. We find out the, together, we try to solve the situation, solve all those situations. Thank you, I don't want to repeat everything, so whatever, you know, discuss, I may leave with this. I saw the video also.
Mr. Chair.
Chief, first of all, I want to thank you very much to actually do, have that move and have a supervision at night shift that we never had for a while. So I want to thank you for doing that. Like, two public comments about the dispatch. Hopefully, you address with the dispatch. You know, if training has to be done, and you need funds, we will, we're willing to do that. If you need any funds to have our offices train and understand how to have, to work with citizens, how to answer calls, and knowing their orders of the City of Hamtramck, we don't mind doing that. But, you know, hanging the phone twice and then transferring the call, that's unacceptable at all. If those neighborhood ones did not really take their time, go around, make those calls to Detroit, to you guys, and then one of them, Hamza, went across the corner and told the officer, "Hey, hey, we need you," they won't even get caught. They will be here today, stealing houses again and again and again. So I request from you, whatever you need from this body, we're willing to help you. And, but officers need to be out there more. If you have to force it, you're the job, you know, force it, it's your department, whatever makes you think it's best to move that department, let's do it. And you have this body's back, we got you. So again, you know, having officers, being patrolling, we need to, it needs to be more often. You know, I'm around the city, I drive, and we see officers just sitting there. Sometimes there, they might be reports, you know, but not for four or five hours of vehicle just sitting there. So hopefully, you will address that and get more officers out on the streets. Because if there's more officers, like I remember in my days, we used to think twice of doing something stupid. Because officers were always around. Where now, hey, you want to steal a car, go to Hamtramck. You want to rob somebody, go to Hamtramck. You know, so, and it's because officers are sitting more in the offices instead of patrolling the streets. So I hope that you do address that with your officers. You know, you're doing a great job. I wish you all the best. And like I said, the body, mayor, council is with you here.
Just want to touch on, I know we just got a new hire, Zainab, again. Let's see, he also speaks Arabic, which helps us out too, but he's going to be working midnight. We also expecting some new hires, hopefully expedite them, and there'll be more officers on the streets, especially on patrol. And also, I, we devised a plan, and it's something that worked in New York, late hours, when they do patrol, they keep the lights on. I know sometimes, or it might, you know, make people feel more alerted, but it's good, because, you know, when, if you're doing a crime or something, you might think, "Oh my God, where, why are the lights here?" So we want to make sure that the people know that the cops are out there, but most importantly, that the perpetrators of these crimes know that the cops are out there. So we're trying to devise a plan, just once our lieutenant starts his first tour today, of where we keep, there's a few exits and entries, main entries and exits in Hamtramck. We want to make sure those entries and exits are being monitored carefully, and help us, you know, apprehend some of these suspects. And working with Detroit is really huge, and I want to thank Chief White for, you know, allowing us to have access to some of the technology they have, and also, we can share a lot of things with them.
Okay, thank you. With, with, you know, what I've been talking about hiring, here's an officer that, who applied on January for a job here, and we are in need, we have, you know, shortage in the police force, and until now, he hasn't heard back from the police department. He's, he works at this, I'm Wayne County Sheriff. So this is something also, if we need police officers, there's someone who's waiting on the waiting list, and he's waiting to hear back from you.
Yeah, just wanted to, yeah, so I'm aware of this officer, and the city manager's been pushing to get him in. We're gonna, the next step will be, there's some exams you got to take, and hopefully, we'll see him very shortly. Look forward to it. Also, he's been licensed by the state, so it's, you know, and also, I was someone here to encourage anyone that you know, anybody in other cities or counties that want to apply, or anyone that is interested, we want to encourage them. We're, like I said, we want to make this process as easy expedite, but also efficient to get some really good officers on the street.
And also, you know, I don't know if you know, we had empty scales on Hamtramck Drive. So when we finished, Hamtramck Drive was done, sadly, Hennessy did not put those scales back. So we have two officers right now, I think, a sergeant and a lieutenant, if I'm not mistaken, or a sergeant, I think a sergeant, or maybe two sergeants, maybe one sergeant or lieutenant, who are certified for commercial, you know, violations, who are able to pull semi-trucks, pull these garbage trucks out of coming our neighborhoods. And now sadly, if they have to pull somebody off, there is no space, there is not, there's not the area for them to wait these vehicles. So this is a recommendation to you, and a request that you thought Hennessy, they need to put those scales back on Hamtramck Drive.
Mr. Mayor, for me?
Yeah, go on.
The scales are getting installed next week.
Okay, good.
All right, sir.
We can, we can make the money.
Yeah, we, easily, Northville, couple things, Northville makes 70,000, I know one officer made 70,000 in one day, with scale and trucks. So imagine how much trucks we have in this city, and how much we can make money.
Yeah, we're all, you know, we're happy to keep the community safe and make sure that when people do drive to Hamtramck, they drive to the mall and safely, and we do have a big deal, commercial truck, just for that, and do some training conducted, and I think the city manager, so look forward to, since those scales are going to be, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it. I think what happened, as I before mentioned, the public's been a year, when previous police chief was here, that our editor of our police officer did change, and if need to have training, you know, provide them the training. At that time, police chief and city manager, city manager, say, they're, you know, all will get trained. Even if you have to have Forbes Faina, bring them in, train them, we need to have five sheriff police department here, you know, that's just something we can brag about, we can feel proud of it, you know, we can tell people that our money and our tax money is worth it. So obviously, you're getting a little bit hampered, because everywhere expecting more from you, but I know it's take times to get everything done, you know, you just got here not too long ago. But as I mentioned before, when our officers stop people, they don't talk to them respectfully. You know, one of the senior previously complained to me, then when they, it proves like you're a guilty person, or you're a second-class civilian, you know, they don't, maybe our people are foreign, some of them, but they have been educated, they have education, they understand what, maybe they're not cooperating with American accent properly, so that doesn't mean they're second-class civilian. So, you know, they need to respect people. Mr. Ahmad brother case was, I think there's a little bit too much harassment going on in that case, you know, that was not appropriate. If you know that person, and there are a lot of criminals getting away from getting punishment, but he's been asked too many questions, even though he provide all the information, and licensed, and still harassing him, this become harassment. And secondly, Ayone, my colleague, Mr. Council Hassan always mention, not always, many times, and I'm disagreeing, and I bring objection to this, you say they are better than this council. I'd say that most things get done to this council in the city. Whatever you guys did previously, we're still suffering to correct those issues. Installing meters, getting the bike line, getting the license to the dispatcher, what is called, get permits to the Mariana store, you know, all those things, we are suffering. Last year, this council get more things done with public friendly, what community can bring a better position. And I understand maybe you guys did a lot of good things, there's no doubt about it, but I really have objection to this point. Thank you. Thank you. I accept Bill Meyer judgment on this. He keeps saying this is the most peaceful city. We work as a team better than any other council, so I really appreciate the teamwork. Yeah, we always disagree, but we never take it personal, no conflict, no cussing during meetings. In the past, we used to hear, you know, fighting, yeah. So, so we appreciate everything you guys do, and we are hoping for better and more in the future. So with that, any other questions? All right, thank you. With that, we come to the end of the new businesses, and we move to the reports, and I guess we mentioned everything in our report. I just want to thank all the community members who came today to express their concerns and to listen to what we have to say. This is a good way of community engagements, to get to know what's happening in the community and the city. Because a lot of people who comment on the social media seems like they have no idea what's going on. For example, they will blame us on the parking meters, while it's not done in our time. I mean, we are against that, but we can terminate the contract without consequences. So we have to wait until the end of the contract, and then come up with new terms. Bicycle lines, the bike line, same thing, it was approved years back, before we came to office. And I see a lot of people keep blaming us for that. So we are doing our best to listen to the concerns of the people, but it has to be logical and reasonable and true. We can't fix things that are out of our control. A lot of people are concerned about the Conan Street, we already talked about it, it's going to be fixed soon. The reason for the delay was because the state, because the state delayed their share of funds, and we are waiting for their approval, which would be next week, hopefully, the bidding would be September 6th, and then right after that, we look for contractors to start the work. With that, I also want to thank the police chief for everything you have done, and for completing the police youth academy. It was a great success, and I thank everybody who, everyone who showed up to that event. And we want to thank our police department. We are here just, we blame them on a friendly way, because we are getting questions by the residents of the city, and they are worried about, you know, frequent car thefts that are going on. And so we want a solution for that, and hopefully, we have, we still have trust in our police department, hopefully, we will, we'll get them arrested and put an end to this thing. I know there's, every year, there, I read, there's 345,000 cars getting, you know, stolen in the United States every year. So that's a big number, which means every city gets its share from stolen cars. And it's not only in Hamtramck, it's everywhere, we know that, but we are a small city, we are a very peaceful and safe community. Our people, even the criminals, they are from outside of our city, mostly, they pass by our city. So we are a very peaceful community, people who are not violent, they don't like problems. But we have, we have a, you know, police department that can protect us if they do their job right, and we expect them to do that. Can I say something? Oh, not now, public comments are coming. So now with that, I come to the end of my report, and shift it to Mr. Mayor, Porton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Sunday, Mr. Mayor, myself, fire chiefs, and city manager, we went to an event, Al Islami Center, it's a nice event, the graduation programs. We encouraged them, and they appreciated. For city health, they built a new mosque, wonderful mosque. And so they are opening very soon for the service. Secondly, last night, I was driving in Conant around 12 o'clock. I tried to call 911, but car come in, the drunk car come in with a left right. I tried to move myself on the sidewalk. So our police officers are patrolling, but please, I hope at this time, we have any officer in the Conant, they can catch them. I blow the horn, I say to myself, these are unsafe sometimes in the night time, our street. Please put some patrolling for those there, over the street. And I hope we're going to see you again at the Labor Day weekend, and we enjoy the Labor Day, and thank you very much to give us the opportunity, give me the opportunity.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Mayor Porton, our city council report.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Fai.
I want to thank all the residents, community leaders that came here tonight. And also, I want to mention about the meters. I know people are complaining about the city meters. Just to let you guys know, we have maybe eight more months, and then we will decide if we're going to remove them or not. But for now, because we have eight months, anybody that has a handicap on their vehicle, if you have a handicap on your license plate, you don't have to pay. There's a way of you adding your plate to the meter, and then it will recognize that you're a handicap, and you're good. So whoever has a handicap, family member, you can grab this, we have them downstairs, and it will show you if you have a handicap, not a tab on your mirror, it has to be on the license plate, so you don't have to pay again. So, thank you very much, and you guys have a good night, and be safe. If you have a handicap on the license plate, you don't have to.
Mr. Mayor?
No. Nope, that's not how it works.
Thank you very much, and you guys have a good night.
To speak on that point, not, it doesn't count if you have a handicap on the?
It does.
I thought it did.
You just have to tell the meter, "Get your handicapped." But you can also set up the app where, you know, put it in there permanently as well.
And it has to be seen at the local.
Technically speaking, to have the free parking, you have to have the extra up and above handicap, which is a sticker, it's like a goldish yellow sticker on there. It's a, it's an extra enhancement above handicap, it's a traditional handicap. And if you do have that, you can actually physically go to the meter, tell it you're handicapped, and it should be free, or you can download the app on your phone, put your license plate on there, and check it in perpetuity for it always to recognize who's handicapped.
Mr. Chair, to address the city manager, they actually brought you a Mr. Chair, to address the City Manager, he actually brought you a ticket, that someone had a ticket for it and he had a hanging handicap and not on the license plate. And you said that it does not read if there's a hanging.
It may not have had the sticker on it, Councilman.
What is it?
It may not have had the enhancement sticker on it.
He had a little tag on there.
I'm not aware.
Well, it was dismissed because the guy's a handicap. So I don't know if the system will recognize those that has a tag on them.
It recognizes the plate number specifically, not necessarily the handicap whether it's not. Once they put their plate number in the system or in the app, it's good to go. I mean, you can't really tell whether it's on the plate or if there's a hanging one. But if they're handicapped and they're entitled to the free parking, they just put their plate number in the application or tell the meter individually. Sorry for the point of clarification.
All right, thank you. Any more reports?
Mr. Mayor, one quick things, the people, whoever pay for their fee for empty lot, there was additional fee need to be paid, that has been changed, the ordinance is being modified and you can ask for your refund to City Manager if you paid already previously. Just a quick update.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Hassan, you're right.
So the resolution we approved for the UCC, it was bump approved, whatever we was looking for. And cost come from UCC and somebody want to donate, it's still good. And this alley is little slab, it's not straight. So there is the water and snow and nothing going to be big deal, they're going to clean it anyway. There are not going to be any other safety concern. So that's the good thing. Second, the community policing, there's lots of city has it. A community member that does the community policing too, reduce the police. It's a lot of, when I go to Michigan Municipal League Conference and we heard a lot of things also. So, citizen patrol is very good thing and from there, also lots of safety improvement come. So that's the good thing. To police department, young generation how involved, that's the good thing, positive site for Hamtramck residents. And the street name is very important because of, like Dr. Abdulkauri Malgajali. We remember him and his service to the city and all those things. So like, I just want to remember or remind something, around 2003, '04, when the election come, I saw that from the Yemeni community, one gentleman is very active, leader of the leader, brother Saleh Al-Jahim. On the Holbrook Street, vegetable markets, there was the person who used to go over there. I was pulling out and he's coming in because, hey, we got to talk, community, how we can improve each other. From that day, he's active. So, I request last year, try to bring one of the street name, honorary street name for the great leader who worked, even though this age, no air condition, he's still sitting here, listen to the community problem and try to help the community. The two council member came to me, they told me, please don't do right now. We're going to bring that resolution after election with the big things. So I hope that two council member and with the other new elected, we together bring his name as a street, Miller Street, and because he leave that area, mosque over there. I spoke to the Detroit, Detroit side is ready anytime. See if I have the Hamtramck side, his name, Mr. Saleh Al-Jahim name, I can put the Detroit side. It's going to be the honorary respect, he not getting nothing. So like again, I said, we don't know who is Barga, we don't know who is Miller. So next generation has to know who is Saleh Al-Jahim, who is Abdulkauri Malgajali, who is elected official systematically, who did community what thing, that kinds of thing, we can appreciate the community. So I hope it's going to come soon. The tax increase things, because the 2009, my election has under, Ibrahim Al-Jahim was the campaign manager. We want to reassess the houses as the market value. What is the thing, side by side, there's the, lots of house, never get changed to the sold different name, their tax is still low, low, low. So we have to find out the wire law. Or also, right now, the value assessor team is doing, I'm not agree with that. They should not go that far, or they have the formula, they can minimize something. So that also, we have the council, I thought we have the team member to go with their together, reassess or find out legally how we can bring the taxes down, okay? It's not the thing, mainly issue, it's the thing is the assessor department, how they using the formula. Long time ago, we fired the one assessor because of he was using the wrong formula and all the African-American gift houses came to the twenty-five thousand tax and it was city mistake. So it's not the city all time doing the right thing. So still we can have a sit talk and make a good thing, thank you.
Any more reports? No, sir. All right, so with that, we move back to the second round of public comment, please.
Ibrahim Al-Jahim, two minutes, please.
All right, there were six points. First one is, the city of Hamtramck, I see a third world politics in this city. Sad to say, and you guys know what I mean by that, every single one of you. Okay, number two, Councilman Sumayidi told the President of the UCC a month ago, you will not be able to do the speed bumps or humps unless I approve it. That sound like a manager and a mayor to me? Okay. And he said, we could do donation, he told me he was wanting to give a thousand, right Sumayidi? To the speed bumps, if they pay for their own speed bumps, you said he was give a thousand?
You speak yourself.
He told me that, so that's what he meant, the donation, anyway, yeah, okay. I was in Lansing last Saturday, from ten in the morning to ten at night, now tell you what. You mentioned Hamtramck, they go, they jump, they don't like you guys. And if they don't like you, we're losing as citizens. We need grants from the state, we need you guys to work with the governor, with the Secretary of State, with the Attorney General. This does not make sense. We did better before. Body camps, number four. I was the reason they did the body camps, and Max knows that. When they beat up the mentally ill kid by Yemen Cafe, and I was in New York. You ask for FOIA, they don't even give you anything, well, we can't, the manager has to approve it, the this and that, run around. Number five. The street naming on Miller. We had a resolution.
It's done.
And it's coming soon, and I thank you for that. Number, can I get an extra minute, please? The last thing I want to talk about is, Councilman Hamid Hassan, I would like to commend you for your courage in this council. Since 2009 till this day, you never backed off. You represent the citizens, you're a leader, you're not a follower. You guys need to learn from him.
Thank you, and we are very proud if the state doesn't like us, but we know the reason why they don't like us. Everybody knows why, we know why the Attorney General don't like us, so we don't care. That's for me to know, we know that very well. And so, go ahead to the next person, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't like your first name, I can't read it.
Anwar.
Anwar, that's what I had said.
Good evening. Actually, I was ready to say anything, but DDA meeting and then we said the City Council, let's come and look like it's a really hot topic about the safety and a lot of things. First of all, safety is the most important thing in the city. And we would like the citizens to work with the police department. We need more citizen patrol force, from the citizens to keeping high. We need to be about this too. We need a neighbor watch eye watch too. If you go to any city, also, it's citizen habit and issue too, we need to admit. There is sometimes lack of communication between the citizen and the police. But sometimes also, you call the cops, police department, they catch those criminals. You say, hey, come and see what's going on, and people back off. Because there's going to be, maybe this criminal, they're going to maybe come back and attack you. So, police department, the city has nothing to do, okay, let's go home. These people, they come back the next day and do the same thing again and again. So it's also our responsibility, when anything's happen, we need to stand up as a team from the city hall, from the city council, police department, we are all responsible. That's when it comes to the safety. Another thing I know, we always, when something happen, we forget all about the good stuff. As the Mayor mentioned, the City Manager, the City Councils, Police Chief. Also, how much responsibility you guys have to our city, keeping us safe, keeping us, keeping the city clean, keeping too much work given forward. So, can I get another minute? So we would like to thank you, all of you. And we are lucky to you guys, we have faith in you, we trust you all, from Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Police Chiefs, no matter what mistakes happen, what incidents happen, we have a trust and faith for you guys and we all in this. And we look forward to keep, Hamtramck keep going, bar and bar, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the talk.
Thank you. With that, we come to the end, we have a closed session now. We thank everybody for coming and we wish you a good night.
Thank you.
By the way, these are under bar.
Make a motion, please.
I'm motioning to close this session. I'm motioning.
Second.
Me. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I can't stay for the closed session, I can go to another.